Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Mayor Pressing?
The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is February 17, 2014. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Marlin, is that correct? Seconded by Ammons. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Dennis?
I think that we got a note, is this the minutes that had a correction? There was a number that was corrected from, a vote that was taken and Charlie Smythe's vote had been incorrect, so we have a corrected minutes.
Okay. Do you want to read what that correction was, Phil?
It was from a nay to a yea, I believe.
It was a vote that we recorded and we recorded it wrong and it had to do with, I forget.
Is it item?
But he voted for it.
Is it item D under, or which one?
Item N, ordinance number 2014-02019. And it had to do with annexing certain territory. Nope, that wasn't it.
No. It's 2014-02-014R. It was the inspection agreement.
Okay, so Smythe should be an aye.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's what it was, that's right.
All right. So, all those in favor, say no if I by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, they're corrected. Are there any additions to the agenda? Don't see any additions. Petitions and communications, if anybody would like to address the Urbana City Council, we have little white cards in the back. I have two people. Carletta Donaldson.
Thanks. It's Carletta Donaldson, 406 East Brookins Drive in Urbana. From, so on Mattis Avenue from Bradley to University, it took a bit more than one week with the almost bad weather conditions we had just last week. They mentioned that something needed to be done, the work was done, the road was repaired. University Avenue from Mattis to downtown and further didn't need a repair this time, and I'm assuming it's because it's the same type of work that was done on Mattis from Bradley to University. Okay, I know I live in Urbana, so close to their home, we're right here in Urbana, and I have spoke to Mr. Gray about this. East Main Street between Shucks and where it veers or curves around to Route 150, excellent job done on that road, but as Mr. Gray said, that that cost a bit more money as well, I guess because asphalt had gone up. I do understand this, and please, I am not an expert. I believe it was probably stripped down to the concrete and then asphalt poured over it, and I understand that asphalt is recyclable. Please correct me if I am wrong. So we should probably look at what company or companies do that work, and that's on Washington and also in Champaign, from Mattis, on Mattis from Bradley to University, and maybe negotiate with them and use their price, use what they have, and if the entire twin city was done, that has to be a savings to taxpayers, as opposed to repatching, then the weather gets bad again, it softens up, and it has to be repatched again. It might even produce a few jobs. I mean, we don't know, but I'm thinking in terms of looking at Windsor Road. I don't think a study is needed to show that what roads or what asphalt works better. We, I guess, just have to decide on the money and maybe that can be budgeted for next year. Again, I have talked to Bill Gray just briefly about it, and again, I do understand that this type of work does cost, but again, when you're repatching and reservicing, it seems like if you do it one time and it lasts for maybe 10 or 15 years, that's a savings over every couple of weeks or every couple of months each season repatching. So again, as we prepare the budget for this next year and continue with council goals, that might be considered a priority since we do have winter every year, it's just not known ahead of time to what extent. Again, if we're proactive, getting better roads from the beginning, we will be able to cut costs because asphalt and concrete, as well as salt and sand, do go up each year. The recent bicycle plan meetings at the Civic Center, which I did not attend, the one at the Civic Center, I did attend the other three, and I understand that there were about 30 attendees at the Civic Center. Not quite that many at the other three locations. And I'm not sure that of the 30 attendees that have possibly attended the Civic Center, if that meant at least five or more staff members, as I said, at the other three meetings, which I did attend. My suggestion for meeting number two, just hold one meeting at the Civic Center. If they received a better response there, we just suggest, and just get the word out to our constituents and those in the neighborhood that are interested in this bicycle plan, just have the one meeting. That'll save time and overtime staff, time for staff and other resources that were used on those nights. There is an opportunity for a public comment at the beginning of each meeting. Then there are items on the agenda, resolutions and ordinances. Can an audience member speak at public comment and then to one or more items on the agenda? Can someone answer that now? How does that work? Okay. One time through the entire night?
You can only speak after an item if you request to do so, and that would be your five minutes. You would not get to speak at public input plus that.
Okay, so if there's five different items on the agenda that you're interested in, you have to pick one of the items?
You can speak on all five of them within the five-minute period that you have.
Within the five-minute period, okay. Thank you. And then the city inspector position. Not even a year ago, and I would say about six months ago, we were here talking about rental property registration fees for an inspector that was badly needed to get caught up on inspections.
You have one minute.
Thank you. You voted for it, and it passed. My questions tonight are, was the inspector hired? Are we now caught up, or at least almost caught up? Because now it seems that we're in a position to lend one of our inspectors to Rantoul, the city of Rantoul, or the Champaign County, I'm not exactly sure which one. So can someone, or several someones, since most of you voted for the rental registration fee increase, explain this to the residents, especially to the many people who came to the meeting in opposition? That was in August and September. And then finally, the traffic study committee, I know that the deadline was Friday, just maybe if we can get an update, I'm sure we know if enough people were applied that were in each spot, like city, city council, and so just wondering where that process might be. And that's it? Thank you.
Thank you. Bishop King James and Reverend Evelyn B. Underwood are not going to speak for the record, but for the record, they would like to say that they're still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Okay, Dennis?
Yeah. So I was asked to read an item that came via email into the record, so I will. And this is to the city council. I understand that Mrs. Laura Ferrex will be addressing the city council tonight regarding working tightly with the Urbana, with Urbana to foster more entrepreneurship here, and indeed throughout central Illinois. I regret not being able to be present for what I am sure will be an excellent talk, and I speak for many when I say that we look forward to this vigorous back-and-forth interaction, producing hockey-stick growth of startups here and the student education and job creation that this growth will bring. I'd like to personally thank Laura for presenting, and with everyone else, look forward to extensive collaborations. Best regards, Andrew Scheinman, Interzone Consulting. I'll pass this on to the clerk.
Unfinished business. I will say that I got a lot of applications for the task force on Friday, and I got one today, so I'll bring them to you at the next council meeting. But I have most of it filled, and so I'll have to go through, I didn't have a chance to look at all the ones that came in on Friday, so I will get it completed by the next council meeting. Reports of standing committees, we don't have that for, because we didn't have a committee of the whole. Reports of special committees, I don't believe we have that. Reports of officers, is there anyone who would like to? Yes.
I just wanted to let-
Diane?
I just wanted to let people know that, if you maybe recall, a couple of weeks ago, I presented with the Lema Neighborhood Action Committee a copy of the music video that was produced by Urbana Public Television and featuring neighborhood residents celebrating the Let's Move initiative. And I just want to let people know that the National League of Cities, Let's Move Cities, Towns and Counties, has picked the video to feature in their national newsletter, which went out on Friday. So that was a great honor, we were, the video was featured with maybe along five or six other cities in the entire country. So they also confirmed that they would be forwarding it to the White House. So we're very proud for the neighborhood group.
Thank you very much. Any other, oh yes, Bill Gray is here.
Thank you. Wanted to update council on three items. Construction, road construction projects. The first is High Cross Road update. Last week, the IDOT had a letting and open bids, and the low bidder for the project is open road paving out of Urbana, and their bid was around $7.6 million for the project. Again, High Cross Road is adding lanes, two lanes in each direction between University Avenue and south down to Florida Avenue. There'll be also turn lanes, and this is road widening work in anticipation of the Menards acreage development that hopefully would be occurring in the future. There would also be some work, activity on University Avenue east and west of High Cross Road, and this project will be coordinated with another resurfacing project of US 150 to St. Joe. That's a separate standalone project that hopefully will be light later this year. And then Washington Street between Pfeffer Road and High Cross Road would be reconstructed, so that intersection piece would be done too. There would not be traffic signals installed at Washington at High Cross Road at this time. They're not warranted, there's no Menards projects, but that would be something in the offing if and when that development starts. Number two, Olympian Drive, if you haven't heard, we did receive a favorable order from the Illinois Commerce Commission. They've approved, approved the bridge design, they've approved funding up to $7.8 million. We're now finalizing, we did receive plan approval from IDOT last week, and we're finalizing a utility agreement with Ameren, and Champaign is finalizing a small strip of right-of-way acquisition west of the tracks. So we're hoping for an April letting. I'll be taking to this body soon a updated state city agreement, funding agreement that reflects these funding, which also includes federal funding, surface transportation funding too. So be on the lookout for that agreement. And the third item, Windsor Road, we had excellent news last week. The IDOT Secretary of Transportation announced that we would be receiving up to $3 million in surface transportation urban money. That money technically gets routed through COATs, so at the April Technical Committee, Policy Committee meeting, they'll be considering that for inclusion, for FY15 availability. We then are tasked with the matching dollar amounts to pay for that construction and the engineering costs. Preliminary engineering has started, that work has begun. It's a quarter million dollars we did receive from IDOT already, and the consultant believes that'll take another $50,000 to finalize the plans and specifications and get the project in position for bidding this summer. So I will know probably around April 1st with a better, more refined cost estimate. Right now, the construction we've been saying is around $6 million. There's engineering fees on top of that. There should be little to no utility relocation work, no land acquisition costs as far as I can determine, so stay tuned for the more refined cost on that. And then we will be talking to you about bonding, the mayor and I, and Mike and others have been meeting with bond council and putting thoughts together about that, putting that into place. So, three large projects for Urbana that are in the works here, and I just wanted to give you that update. And next week, I know some folks that attend these meetings are interested in sewers, and I wanted to let you know that Brad Bennett and his staff, John Lyons, will provide council a 2013 sewer report to kind of go over all the related activities that we do, and I know there have been some policy changes for that, and so you'll get the full update as to what happened in 2013. So, that's it.
Well, we got a lot of good news recently, and we also missed a big snowstorm yesterday. Spring is on the way. Dennis?
Yeah, could I add one more announcement?
Sure.
Wednesday at 7:00 here in the chambers, there'll be a meeting of the Tree Commission, Urbana Tree Commission, and it will be meeting to discuss legacy tree nomination of the hackberry tree that has recently been trimmed. Also, there's an interest in from, hearing from the public on submissions for potential art projects to the Tree Commission dealing with the use of the wood that has been removed from the tree. So that's on Wednesday at 7:00.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Tom Carino?
Yes, thank you. Everyone should have received a copy of this month's economic development report. Just to highlight a few items, Choices Incorporated, a private social service agency, has opened at County Plaza at 102 West Main Street, bringing 30 employees to downtown. That project is a partnership between Choices Incorporated, the property owner, Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, and the city of Urbana, so that's a great addition to downtown. A lot of activity at Gregory Place. Fira is now open, and we're moving towards Deer 72, Co-Fusion and Cafe Benet, all nearing openings, so those are great additions to Gregory Place. Also, related to Market at the Square, Natalie Kenny Marquez, who was, who recently joined the statewide board of the Illinois Farmers Market Association, was appointed chair of their marketing committee, so congratulations to Natalie. And applications for the 2014 season are open, and just this evening, we had a vendor meeting organized by Natalie. And then finally, Lisa Hachidorian, our new public arts coordinator, has now started, and she has hit the ground running in that the last two weekends, she organized arts grant juries to jury the arts grant submissions for 2014. So it's great to have her on board and moving forward with our programs. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Bill?
Yeah, Tom, on the Choices Incorporated, the 30 employees, are those new employees that they're hiring here, or they relocating from someplace else?
I would say it's a combination. I would say a majority of the employees are local and hired here, but there are some employees that I believe are relocating from Indianapolis as part of the company. So I would say a combination, but mostly local employees. I know for a fact that a partner of one of our city employees is new employee at Choices, a local person hired to work there, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Oh, Eric?
So unless I'm really overlooking something, or you're hiding something from us, this month's report actually looks quite good. Am I interpreting it correctly?
I would say every report, every month, has positives. They all look very good. But yeah, I think for several months now, we've had, we've really had some positive momentum in downtown and citywide, so very good report.
Okay, thank you very much, Tom. Any other reports of officers? Apparently not. New business, ordinance number 2014-03-020, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal 2013, 2014. This is Market at the Square, Lincoln Square seating project. And Natalie Kenny Marquez is here?
Hello and good evening. I'm Natalie Kenny Marquez, Director of Urbana's Market at the Square and Marketing Coordinator for the city, and I'm here with Bruce Coverley from Public Works, and we promise to keep it brief. This year will mark the 35th year of Urbana's Farmers Market. Last year in 2013, like I reported in the annual report last month, staff estimated an average weekly attendance of nearly 4,500 patrons coming to the market from Urbana, Champaign and beyond. The market does a great job, I think, in terms of connecting our community with local food growers and producers. It strengthens our economy and provides access to local artisans. The market also serves as a community gathering place, but gathering sometimes is a little bit of a struggle without proper specified seating area, so that's why Bruce and I are here this evening. We're here to ask for approval of an ordinance that will revise the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2013, 2014, in order to create a permanent seating area in Lot X of Lincoln Square, specifically at the northeast corner of that parking lot, like you see on the screener in your packet. Lot X is the parking lot where Urbana's Market at the Square is located on Saturdays from the first weekend of May through the first weekend of November. The total cost of the seating project is $22,000, and it's proposed that half of the project, or $12,000, will be funded by tax increment Finance District 2 reserves, and the other half, or $12,000, will be funded by Market at the Square reserves, since the use will benefit market visitors as well as others visiting downtown. With an increase in the market size and popularity over at least the past 10 years, the market needs more than just a few small tables and chairs set up under a single 10-foot by 10-foot tent. Many patrons are coming to eat at our food trucks, order a coffee and prepared foods available every Saturday at the market. The addition of this permanent seating area will better accommodate patrons not just coming to market to grocery shop and to support local business, but also to hang out with friends, grab a cup of coffee, enjoy a local pastry. I also included some photos of the current landscaping in the area of the northeast corner of the Lot X. Community development and Public Works staff met with the owner and manager of Lincoln Square Village to discuss the seating project. The location in the northeast corner was determined to be the best fit. It was agreed by all parties that the proposed seating would not only benefit Lincoln Square and its patrons and tenants, but also market patrons. The photos were taken during market season, that's why there's no snow in there, so now you can see what it looks like beyond the snow. With the help of Bruce and Public Works, staff came up with an attractive hardscape and landscape design, which Bruce will talk to you about now.
Yeah, Natalie and Tom approached us back in October. We walked the parking lot and felt this was probably the most appropriate place to put in a small seating area. So if you look at it, it will have about a 320-square-foot hardscape with a landscape to the south. We had a couple of challenges that we needed to look at when we had that bed in front of us. If you look, let's see if I can point. The sidewalk that's currently there cuts through about here, if you know that bed. And just south of that, there's a gas valve, and on this side is a water valve, so that made it so we could not build any farther south in that bed. So to give us some extra room, we're taking out one parking spot to the north. The old sidewalk will be removed. A new sidewalk will take up about half that parking space at the north, and then the other half will be underneath the hardscape. And this will, this will help in a couple of ways. One, it puts that sidewalk in a location that helps give us some buffer, so that people won't be parking cars right up against where everyone will be seating on a Saturday or any time of the week, actually. And then it allows us to expand the hardscaped area so that we can fit in one more table. We originally drew it, and we're going to put a sidewalk down farther, it didn't make sense. Could only put three tables in. So this allows us to put four tables in. And then alongside where Vine Street is, and then cutting across that bed to the other side, is going to be a seat wall. It'll look something like this. That material there, with a column on each end. Columns will help to give it a little more sense of space, it'll also help keep people from sitting too close, because there will be cars, people on that side, so I just assume they don't sit there. So the seat wall will accommodate people, four tables will help accommodate people. We'll be putting in three new trees, and some other shrubs and ornamental grasses, other things that will help make it a nice attractive site. The materials that I've chosen for the hardscape itself will look like this. This is the actual material from Unilock that I'm specking out, so it'll have that, it'll have a, an accent border of kind of a red, three different shades, and then an edge, we call a soldier row, of a tumbled block. So the whole thing together will make a nice, comfortable space. Should be comfortable for about 20 to 25 people, max, and should give quite a, an asset to the Market Square.
Okay. Dennis, will you first?
I'll do first. Yeah, so a couple of different thoughts, and I have some questions for you too, okay? So would this replace the awning and the chairs, or would that be in addition to the awning and chairs that we set up temporarily for people to eat at? Is this an additional space, or is this replacing that space?
I think that during the six or seven weeks during the middle of the season where we're just totally jam-packed with people and vendors, that there's always the opportunity to bring that tent back and those tables and chairs, but during the rest of the season, you know, we'll keep an eye, and if I feel like we need to add, add the tent back, we'll add it back. But this will take the place of that, because this will nearly triple the seating capacity that we have under that tent right now.
Yeah, and I like the idea that you're using the wall as an extra seating too, some people, that's more casual.
Yes.
The tables that will be set out, are they going to be there permanently? Is, are they year-round kind of tables made of cement or something, or can you explain that, how they're going to be cared for, or what's, what the responsibility is for the city there?
Sure, we're looking into different options for the furniture that will be located out at the seating area. We have a couple of different examples we've been looking at. They are brightly colored, as it's shown in the photo, and they would be out all year round. So they're similar to what you'd see at parks and pools and other places where the furniture is set out all year.
I like the idea that this is right across from the city building. A lot of people are using the pathway between the city building and the parking lot anyways to cross the street, and also it's probably one of the closer places that a person could go while they're in the, you know, when they're in the Farmers Market to take children or whatever to a public bathroom, across the street too. So that's an important thing. It's great that you're having the pathway, and that's going to be part of the feature of that, because that's needed. Does this mean that some of the vegetation that we see in the photographs that has existed, you know, maybe from last year, including the blue spruce, are they going to come out, and are you going to be replacing them with some other trees?
The entire landscape will be taken out and replaced with that.
So this is goodbye to the tree, huh, as it is?
Yeah, that blue spruce-
It's a pretty mature-
It'd be about right there, I think.
Yeah.
If we left it. So-
Oh, where, so show me again, with your cursor?
About, about right there.
Oh, so right in the middle of everything?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, if we didn't have that gas valve and that other water valve to deal with, then we probably would have had some more freedom to adjust where that hardscape was and try to utilize that, but this seemed to be the only place where we could actually put something.
Well, it's a creative idea, it seems like it's, and you're doing a little bit of creative financing. Okay, thank you.
Diane?
Are you, is Public Works doing the work yourself, or will you be hiring someone to do that?
We're going to split it. The demolition and the new sidewalk will be put in by the operations division. The hardscape in the wall is going to be subcontracted, so that'll go out for bid. And then the planting will be put in by the Arbor Division.
So it's mostly in-house?
Carol?
Just a, the fiscal impact says that it's 22,000, but the totals is 24,000, the 12 and 12 in the report.
22,000 is the, the correct amount. I'm sorry, the memo.
Okay, yeah, it just says half of the project, 12,000, then it doesn't say 10, it says 12 again.
Sorry about that.
And then will you, in the next budget cycle, then put maintenance in for this project?
I think-
Maintenance would just fall under our regular-
Regular maintenance order? Okay, thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, and then on that, that other tree, is that a hackberry, the other?
Yeah.
Where would that be on this picture?
Where would it be?
Yeah.
That would be about right here.
I know it didn't have a great shape, but is there, I mean, it seems like it's providing a nice shade.
It's in a spiral of decline in that the activity of putting this in would probably push it over the edge and in two years it would have to come down. And so it's better to probably just start from scratch.
Okay. Then on the budget, if we're doing some of that work ourselves, does some of that money go to ourselves or is that 22,000 all for the contractors?
Some of it will go to the operations division to cover their expenses for the demolition and installation of the new sidewalk. Some of it will go to the purchase of the plant materials along with the subcontracting for the hardscape.
Okay, so would we normally need to do a budget amendment to show that as income on the public works side? Or, I mean, does that just get absorbed? I know we've already spent it on overtime for plowing or whatever, but does that need to be handled in the budget?
Yeah, most of it, I mean, for the arbor division, it's just the materials expense. I don't include the cost for the actual work. It's just a project I put in as one of our spring projects.
Okay.
And I think that's probably the same case with the concrete and the demolition work. I mean, we have to also haul that concrete to a place and pay. So it's just to cover the expenses.
So it's out-of-pocket expenses, basically. Okay, and then one other question with the seating. I know the tables like outside the food co-op and in that little sunken area by Health Alliance have benches where you could actually sit two people on a bench so you could get eight people at a table. Would these tables be big enough to do that, something like that? Or are you thinking like four people at a table?
We're looking at a couple of different options. We noticed that Common Ground Food Co-op just got some new tables outside of their front entrance. So we've been eyeing those as possibilities as well as a few others that we've looked at between community development and public works. Different arrangements that would allow for a nice amount of seating, but not too crowded in that area. It does get kind of warm in the middle of summer. So all different options and table designs at this point.
Great, thanks a lot.
I hate to see the little evergreen go. What kind of trees are you proposing for the three little trees?
I'm open to suggestion if someone has a favorite. We haven't picked them yet. I'm thinking in terms of those three trees, they're probably going to be something that'll add some seasonal interest. They won't be too large, probably maximum thirty to thirty-five feet in height and about fifteen to twenty-foot spread each.
And trees that will last a long time?
Yes.
That will become legacy trees, perhaps? Dennis?
All right, so I guess I was looking at the blue spruce and then Bill Brown just mentioned the hackberry. So the hackberry is in the planting area. Why is it that you can't keep that tree? It's a mature tree, it's good...
That tree's already had about a third of its top removed over time. The activity in order to install this, we're done, there we'll get to. We're going to be doing a lot of digging in this area to put all the plants in and other things. I'm just speculating, looking at it based on my own experience, that this tree will continue to decline. It might actually accelerate its decline. Considering the amount of activity and the targets you have in this area, it could become rather hazardous in a short period of time. And so it's better to probably take it out in this project and replace it with new.
I'm always concerned, I always hear that what appears to be a pretty healthy large tree becomes suddenly hazardous. It seems to be the going technique for tree removal. I'm trying to figure out how this can happen.
I'm an arborist and a horticulturist. I don't want to take trees out, but I can look at a tree and tell when it's senescent. And this one is in that category where it's going backwards instead of forwards. We could reevaluate and look at it and leave it and take it out later. From a design standpoint, threes are nice though. That's another thing that, you know, as a designer I look at. So if we didn't, we wouldn't be able to put in one of those trees. So we might, you know, reevaluate. The planting design is not in stone though. I mean, it hasn't been done yet. The hardscape is.
This might be a topic that might be of use for anybody who has feelings about these trees to bring to the Tree Commission.
Sure.
Any other questions? Mike?
Okay, so I'm just a little bit not following the math here. You said some of this money's coming back to the city to recoup some costs. I mean, what do you mean by that?
It'll cover the costs for the plants. That's not in my budget.
Okay.
It'll cover the cost for the hardscaping. That's currently not in anybody's budget. What'll come out of my lines as I have them now would be when we go in and remove any plants that are being removed. The act of putting the plants in the ground, that'll be from my line item for work. It isn't going to be charged to this project. The majority of the money's going to go to the subcontractor for that hardscape. You're probably looking at close to $10,000 just for that one. Furniture tends to cost...
Sure.
A lot. And the plant material. So that's where 22,000 will end up going.
Okay, and so Carol raised a point that I was going to raise. There is a $2,000 difference here and I'm not trying to quibble over $2,000, but is it 12,000 from the TIF and 10,000 from the Market Square Reserve or vice versa?
The ordinance is correct. My memo is incorrect. The total cost of the seating project is 22,000. I didn't update the memo. We actually changed the numbers. So 11,000 from TIF Two and 11,000 from Market.
Eleven and eleven, okay. See, I trust you so much I didn't read the ordinance. I just read your memo.
Well, thank you and I apologize for that typo.
Here's my other question though and, you know, we earlier, at an earlier meeting, we discussed at length kind of the historical revenues and expenditures of the Market at the Square. So is the source of the reserve, and I just need to be educated on this. I'm one of the new people around here somewhat. What is the source of the reserve? Is this from the few flush years that there were because we've been running deficits, correct?
Correct. Tom, did you have something you wanted to say?
The source of the market's reserves are revenues exceeding expenses in past years. So that, I'm not sure if I put together a kind of a historical revenue versus expenses for the market. So going back to 2002, the market has, in most years, experienced revenues over expenses. And so that the reserves have been built up over the years since about 2002.
But this is also not taking into consideration that we don't put all of the expenses of the Market at the Square in the Market at the Square budget? There are some personnel expenditures that remain separate from that, correct?
Their part-time and seasonal staff expenses all come from the Market at the Square's budget. The director's salary does not, is not paid for by the market. It's funded by tax increment financing.
So again, just, you know, I certainly understand as a business owner that sometimes you have to improve your business in order to attract more customers. So, you know, my issue with this is it's not a huge amount of money, but, you know, we're still not talking about a money-making proposition here either. Is this an enhancement that in your opinion will bring more customers? Or is it just a convenience to the customers we already have?
I'm hoping for both. I think when the market gets crowded, the aisles get crowded and it's hard to get around the market. And I'm hoping that especially with the addition of food trucks over the past few years and prepared food vendors, this seating area will provide a location where people can go to to sit down for a little while or stand and eat their food rather than in the middle of the rows, make it difficult for shopping around.
Right, but I'm just saying those beef empanadas are good enough to stand up and eat. So I'm going to keep standing up and eating mine, even if there aren't any seats available. My final question is, have the folks at Lincoln Square been approached about helping to contribute to this improvement?
We did speak with Lincoln Square, the manager and the owner, because we are looking to take one of the parking spaces so that we can readjust where the sidewalk location is at. And they like the design and they were, they agreed that the use of that one spot would be all right.
So is this city property that we're talking about except for the parking space?
The parking space is leased by Lincoln Square from the city, so it's our...
So it's all city property?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Diane?
Just to your question about the need or what the impact of the seating area would be, I would point out that during the Market at the Square strategic planning phase with all the public meetings, one of the most common comments that came back was a request for more seating, more shade, that sort of thing. And especially with families with kids. Well, it's easy for us to stand up and eat our empanadas, you know, if you've got a couple of kids in a stroller and bags. They, people really were requesting more seating space. So I think they will stick around longer and it certainly will be more comfortable for the patrons.
Carol?
Ms. Marlin just brought it, these won't have umbrellas to them. They'll just be table and chairs sitting on this property.
There are a few designs we're looking at that have a two-inch hole in the middle that would provide space to put a temporary umbrella.
If we can, that makes sense, in the middle of the summer.
Right.
Dennis?
So since this is on city property and the city does own the parking lot actually, have you wondered or have you, to me it looked kind of small. And I was wondering if maybe, I mean, if, you know, this had become more of, you know, one of our first curbanas in which, you know, we actually, you know, assimilated, you know, a few more parking spots to make this into a more really significant feature, then it seems to be a little tiny for a start. But maybe it's not impossible to add to it. But I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, if you're looking for a great place to add a, what looks to me like kind of a mini park within the Market at the Square so people can really enjoy sitting down, should it be larger?
You know, I think that's something we can take into consideration. When we met with Lincoln Square, we had presented a couple of different locations within the market that could be viable options for a seating area. And this was the one that would be the easiest to accomplish and the least expensive of the locations. The other ones are significantly larger, but there's more barriers, landscaping and signage. And I don't want to infringe on the parking in that area because there are employees of, or tenants at Lincoln Square that park in that parking lot Monday through Friday. So those are some things that we had to take into account. So we chose this space and we'll kind of gauge it this season to see how it's being used and if we should expand to another location for seating in upcoming seasons. But it'd be nice if it were larger, but this will be a great start and much needed at the market.
Diane?
Do we have a motion?
No, we don't.
All right, I move approval of ordinance number 2014-03-020.
Second.
Who seconded it?
Hi.
Oh, Eric Jacobson seconded it. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the rule?
Ms. Hammonds?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two presentations. The first is the University of Illinois Report on Technology Clusters and Implementation Strategies for Local Economic Development. Tom Carino?
Thank you, Mayor. The council has previously discussed this effort, which is a report that has been done by Business Cluster Development for the Research Park at the University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign. And council mentioned a presentation on this and an invitation was extended to Laura Ferrex. So Laura Ferrex, Director of the University of Illinois Research Park and Director of Economic Development for the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, is here to discuss this effort.
Welcome, Laura.
Thank you for having me. I'm going to present this report today in the form of a presentation given by the consultant. This was as she presented it to us at the Research Park and university. And I'll try my best to paraphrase it quickly. The actual report is about sixty pages long and is available online on the Research Park's website. So feel free to see more detail that has been recommended in that version. This report was commissioned through the Research Park as part of a collaborative effort with the campus in addressing how we could do a better job of contributing to economic development. It's recognized that the Research Park is just one aspect of economic development and technology-based economic development is only one type of work that we might do as a university or within the community, what our role should be. However, it's an important one that makes sense. The university has a large research engine and contributor to many startup companies and entrepreneurial activity. We saw that there was an opportunity to expand that further and asked a consultant to help us with which sectors are most important for opportunities for our communities as well as what key factors were necessary to advance them. So first, we asked her to look at which clusters made sense for us. Are there concentrations of industries with technology as a focus that makes sense for our communities as a strong opportunity? And with that, she wanted to see not only what would be pie in the sky, dream opportunity for us, but where was there really a solid foundation? This consultant does this type of work all over the country for communities that hire her, universities that hire her, incubators or research parks that have hired her to do this type of analysis. So it was comparing us to other communities as well and making sure that it, in fact, was something that was viable for us to pursue. When looking at that, she said that she wanted to make sure that it was both something that had a solid foundation of already having success within the market, that there was also support and leadership for these sectors amongst the community when she did interviews. She also was looking for growth markets that could be pursued that have an opportunity for us to see expansion in the near future and assets to support them. These were some of the key findings of our community that she found. She said that there was an overall spirit of collaboration that was quite strong. The culture of entrepreneurship was strong and the level of activity for a community of our size was quite remarkable from what she had described. The ecosystem well-established at this time and that the commitment from the university to get involved in economic development was a strong indicator of our support. However, there are also some other issues that were discussed as challenges in our community which came out as some of these sectors were analyzed. There's a strong technical talent base in our community, but not necessarily as much of an established management talent base to support the growth of startup companies. The capital requirements in our community include both early-stage funding such as angel funding or early-stage venture capital or SBIR funding, but growth-stage capital making it a challenge for some of those companies to continue to grow and prosper in our community. Air service was repeatedly mentioned during interviews as a challenge. The one singular airline that we have providing flight service being something that was mentioned by some of the professionals in these interviews, but also constraints of how many destinations we have from our airport. In addition, transportation was discussed and I'll mention that again, via high-speed rail or other opportunities that we could see an improvement to Chicago, which would provide us another larger airport for access as well. Some things were mentioned as attractive and some not in our community and I'll mention some of those as we get through the sectors. The presence of our hospitals being seen as a strong indicator for our community of healthcare as an opportunity, but also the lack of a academic health center for a college town with a large research institution of our size as being a constraining factor for that industry segment. So assets, again, just in quick recap, some of the things mentioned, a variety of aspects of the University of Illinois and its research pool. Also, the technical talent in our community amongst private sector. The hospitals in our community as one of the major employers and opportunities for collaboration. The entrepreneurial ecosystem, the Research Park having a success over the last ten years. And then overall, as I said, entrepreneurship. Three recommended clusters came out of this analysis, the first being bioengineering and biomedical, the second data analytics and computing, and the third, energy. The first being data analytics, management and computing. When you talk to people outside of our community or within the community, she said it was readily recognized that computing is a core strength. From the mosaic legacy to strength... From the mosaic legacy to strengths in computer science to NCSA, but also the companies across our community. There's a long history of success of developing companies that actually stay in our community once developed. So some of the examples would include what became Intel in our community, which was originally a startup company. Argus turning into General Dynamics, which is now in Savoy. Volition being a startup company that began in our community and grew to have more than two hundred employees. Wolfram being a company that grew in our community and now has nearly six hundred employees. All of these were examples, as she talked to different employers in the community, of saying it was not only possible to start companies in the computing space, but to grow. In particular, big data or data analytics being a topic area that was resonating with many companies as a growth potential. There's a lot of activity across the country in that space, and we have a solid foundation of professionals in that space to build upon. As an example, Yahoo choosing to have their new operation nearly double in size here is based off of expertise in data sciences. The second area that was addressed in the report was the convergence of engineering and medicine and the strengths that occur at the university in this area. So in particular, the University of Illinois has particular strengths coming out of the Beckman Institute, the Institute for Genomic Biology. Collaborations between NCSA and Mayo as examples and bioinformatics as seen as a strong potential. Not to say that we would address all medical technologies, but specifically the convergence of engineering with medicine as being a strength for our community to build upon its existing core. There were also existing companies throughout our community that are already leveraging these types of technologies and growing within our community. Companies mentioned like Acoustic Med Systems, that's in Savoy, ISS that makes instrumentation, Mimosa Acoustics that makes hearing technologies, eyesight that was purchased by Sony, and other examples of success in our community. Most of those having some sort of convergence of this engineering and medical expertise. The third being energy. So energy could mean many things. There are certainly some strengths in the university that were noted of the Energy Biosciences Institute, the work in smart grid technologies that the Information Trust Institute, renewable sources of energy. This still being a little bit more nascent on the commercial side of operations, but certainly there are examples as well from wind that's being developed around us to opportunities to leverage agriculture or examples of companies started in the solar industry that have come out of our community and gone on to significant funding, to others like Creative Thermal here in Urbana that are doing new energy solutions, or two ARPA-E award winners in our community, chromatin and dioxide materials. So again, opportunities for growth, but also a need for, in this space, to have testing of those capabilities. So taking those technologies and seeing them implemented in our cities. There were examples cited of San Jose doing a strong job of that as part of their incubation strategy. So overall, the clusters being developed in this space with these categories, one of our challenges is going from early-stage companies to mature companies and being able to sustain them in our communities. So an incubator may play one role of starting companies, but to be able to grow them, we need to have support resources on the management talent side, the capital side, and physical facilities for them to locate in once they get to maturity. In addition, some of the business access issues were mentioned, as I'd already described, transportation issues came up repeatedly, and as well, if there's in the medical space, a need to have better clinical trials facilitated through academic partnerships with the hospital. Moving forward, many of these recommendations may be things that the university can address, but really it's a community-wide type of opportunity that we can take a look at what we have collectively and find where each of us could play a role. These were some of the recommendations for implementation strategies against these. One is simply convening people on a more regular basis. I know the Economic Development Corporation's trying to do this with industry roundtables. We're trying to do it through the Research Park with activities like CEO Roundtable or Women in Tech that are open to the community at large. Communities themselves may see, such as Urbana or Champagne, an opportunity to be able to bring just your businesses from a local standpoint together. The building of management talent was a key issue cited by many of the startup companies as a challenge in our community regardless of where they were located, and we think that there's probably an effort that can be made towards joint recruitment amongst the companies. Enriching the technical talent might also include building up professional skills and technical skills. So as an example, in the big data category, it was mentioned by multiple companies that they were seeking expertise in Hadoop. It's not taught formally at the university, maybe the type of thing that Parkland College offers or something that's done through the Research Park or other business development opportunities that we have in our community for ongoing professional development and skills. The increased business activity in terms of starting more companies, there are a variety of methods that could be used for that, but also attracting companies to our town. We're already seeing a lot of opportunity to do that in terms of traction with industry. In the case of big data, companies like Anheuser-Busch, Dow Chemical, John Deere, and Caterpillar are all now doing activity in that space, and so we think it can be repeated again. Building the cluster identity would be outward marketing of these strengths so that we're known as a community, not just as the University of Illinois, but specific tech sectors where we're already having success with companies. The entrepreneurship side of trying to incentivize more out of the university, a spirit of collaboration with graduate students as a key driver of many of the startup companies, and the ecosystem also including more mentors from alumni, having more connections within our companies that are already in town, and creating opportunities to leverage infrastructure in our community. So UC to be cited in the study as a key asset that is throughout our community that helps to show that we truly are a well-connected and a strong location for IT sector. The growth-stage capital, there are some efforts already happening throughout our community to build an angel network, UCAN. We also have Illinois Ventures actively seeking to raise an additional fund as well as Sarah Capital Private Fund going out and fundraising as well. There are some opportunities for international funding. I've already mentioned transportation, perhaps rail, airport, or other access to airports, and city connecting to Chicago or St. Louis as an opportunity. And then lastly, just overall leadership. There was a discussion amongst many that we needed better consensus around key opportunities that we would jointly seek together and work together as communities and the university to make them successful. I will stop there for the recommendations and would be happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Diane?
Two questions.
Yes.
First, I was, I read through, I read the report, and as I went through it, I continued to see references to this Economic Development Advisory Committee, and then at some point it dawned on me that it didn't include representation from either Champagne or Urbana or Champagne County. So I'm really happy to see that the recommendation from the consultant was to include somebody from each community on that committee. My question is, who does that committee report to and who's actually on it now?
So, there, and whether there's official or not, I guess I would say Economic Development Corporation is our official county organization that represents economic development, and the universities are part of that, the cities are a part of it and private sector.
Oh, I know that. Are they on this committee then?
The EDC, so the EDC being a community-wide, public-private sector organization that represents our community. I think what you're referencing is that the chancellor has an advisory group helping her with recommendations as well, which includes her internal staff as well as a few people that have been providing her some guidance on strategy.
Is that-
That is not a public body like the EDC would be where there are meetings that somebody can attend.
Well, who, what is the Economic Advisory Committee that the consultant is recommending adding city representation to?
Well, we did, in all of the stakeholder interviews, this report was, again, commissioned through the Research Park, and we recommended who should be interviewed as part of that process to include a variety of both public-sector individuals, private-sector individuals, entrepreneurs, financial industry people in the community, and you can see the list in the back. It's on page sixty, which did include city representation as well.
I guess I'm not asking my question right. Let me try again. On page, on page fifty-nine of the report, under the tenth recommendation, it said add leadership representation from the cities Champagne and Urbana and the CEOs of successful technology businesses, and I wasn't clear, to the advisory group, and I wasn't clear what that advisory group was and who it was reporting to.
I think in general that we, as a university or research park, continue to get input from those different respective groups.
So it's not a specific official advisory group?
As the Research Park initiated this study, I guess my answer would be that we have public forums and we have representation of private sector and university people on our official Research Park Board, and we have open meetings, and they are welcome to attend. There are various groups of stakeholders that certainly could be providing input to the Research Park or to the university on an ongoing basis, and we participate in many activities.
Okay.
Yeah, but they don't have a vote, do they?
Well, again, I'd say that the official public-private body that we participate in is the Champagne County Economic Development Corporation, which includes university participation and funding.
Okay, I just was not clear on-
I have a question. Okay, go ahead.
I just have one more question. I'll figure that part out. The other question is, as I read through the report, I was trying to, which was just mind-expanding when you think about the possibility, so it was great to see it. But the question was, is there a critical population mass that the consultant or someone was saying was necessary for some of these things to occur? Because we're obviously in the seedling stage on a lot of businesses, and I, and the few examples of actual other communities that were mentioned included things like, cities like Seattle or Austin or the Research Triangle, which is six or eight counties in North Carolina, or, and we're, you know, we're at a hundred twenty thousand people here in Champagne-Urbana and two hundred thousand in the county, so we would have to grow exponentially to provide a mature environment for some of this stuff to be successful. So what's the vision for the population that's necessary to support some of this stuff?
I know the MTD specifically did an economic development project where it was cited of the cities being two hundred thousand. That was not referenced in this study of having any specific number that was necessary to support it, but rather a growth goal for the community in these specific sectors. Again, the technology sector, I think, only being one aspect. There could be manufacturing, distribution, other healthcare-related opportunities that are strong for our community as well that would help increase the total professional employment. These were specifically, if we're going to address technology-based economic development, some of the contributors to that. Specifically for the size of the communities that would be comparables, as we had talked in the university in discussions, Madison or Ann Arbor were often listed as peer types of communities where other of our top ten public universities are located that are not in major metropolitan coastal cities. I don't think it's fair to set an aspirational community such as Seattle for a community of our size. I think we're generally looking at other college towns and what would be similar to ours.
Okay.
Thanks.
I wanted to ask you about the reference to Carl and Mayo. What is the connection there?
Carl and, they're perhaps separate, although they do do some clinical trial work together. Mayo, I think, was specifically cited, it's just a comma, Mayo, of the Mayo partnership that exists with the University of Illinois and NCSA currently to work on data. They're taking large samples of patient data and being able to do analytics at the university. So it was noted that that's pretty remarkable, you know, big hospital Mayo that could go anywhere, that they were able to come to the University of Illinois to get that expertise, and that we might continue to grow that even in our local communities as well. But seeing that we were working with every major of the top ten medical schools in the US in terms of NIH rankings, that we had collaborations with faculty in every single of medical school across the country. Specifically with Carl, there are a number of collaborations that are happening between the university and Carl already. Part of that is initiating new clinical trials, part of that is through the Biomedical Research Center, where there are even private sector companies located here in Urbana being able to begin those companies here. There's also the Division of Biomedical Sciences that's trying to seek new funding sources, and there are connections with the Bioengineering Department where there are joint faculty appointments seen as areas of strength.
Okay, so it's U of I and Mayo, not Carl and Mayo?
That's my understanding of what she meant.
Okay, I'm very impressed with Mayo, and I like the way they treat Rochester, Minnesota, too.
Yes.
But my other question is, does anybody consider resource constraints like water? When they talk about growing the population, you know, a fifty percent increase in the population, does anybody calculate what that would mean in terms of water, for example?
It was not analyzed as part of this study.
Okay.
I'll say, you know, the Research Park exists with about fourteen hundred employees right now, so if we were to double the size of professional employment in our community, that could be a few thousand jobs associated with the tech sector versus truly getting to a doubling the size of our population, just to set realistic expectations of what this might drive in the near future.
Okay. Carol, and then Eric?
I, when I read the report, I was really excited about the three areas, specifically the technology area. I attended a job fair last Thursday that the state had put on here in our community, and one of the things that came out as I talked to people was the skill level that they needed for the positions that were there wasn't being fostered in the community. When you all did the study, or I'm sure you participated in that, two things, one of them, how much of the discussion included the Training and Technology Center, which we are woefully lacking in this community, to provide the level of technology training for people to get the jobs once we develop them? And the second part is, I didn't see a lot, and maybe we are too far ahead of this curve, I didn't see a lot about the expansion or establishment of a research park kind of area in Urbana. And I wanted to just see if that was part of the discussion as well.
In terms of training, I think there are certainly three levels that K through twelve needs to continue to be strong so that we're creating STEM education opportunities that fill these respective pipeline of jobs. They did speak with, she did speak with Parkland College as part of the interview process with Dr. Ramage and other staff to kind of look at the technical programs that we have to support professional education. In particular, I know on the IT sector that you were addressing, there is a group now getting together through the Economic Development Corporation that includes something like thirty-five companies discussing their recruiting needs and their technical talent needs. That is pretty pervasive across the community right now, and it's nice to see them coming together to address their skill needs as a collective industry group. Specific to that, there are areas that have been recognized as being weak in terms of professional education. As I'd mentioned, working with the university is not always the best place to do that because taking four credit courses through the university isn't necessarily set up to address people coming for a single course or a single programming language. So I think that there's still some work needed. For example, the Research Park started adding mobile application development courses that are short courses. Those have been filling fast every time that we've offered them. We've talked to Parkland College about them also mirroring some of those programs. In the case of big data skills, there aren't short courses currently available, so we've asked the Department of Computer Science if they might open something to non-students to be able to teach those skills, or departments like statistics that are maybe underrepresented in discussions of these types that might be able to help as well. So I think that there is both community college, the university of what they can do to extend their faculty resources or grad students to do training in the community, and then certainly the STEM basis of our kids. In terms of the Research Park expansion, the Research Park currently is in the South Research Park area that is south of the primary campus. Some of the efforts to include more growth in the healthcare segment likely could have ripple effect closer to the hospitals or the Beckman Institute or bioengineering and some of the activities that are along University Avenue. So I think that that was discussed as part of community. I won't formally say much more than that at this time, but I think that that would be envisioned to take place in Urbana.
Eric?
So I wonder, you know, when you talk about the university doing more, of course, immediately one talks about resource constraints.
Sure.
And, you know, where will the resources come? Is there any hope that the state would consider that type of expansion by the University of Illinois and Parkland College? Namely, you know, courses, technical courses for non-students, but for people who are working or might work here? Or management courses for that matter, because is there, is there anything in the works as far as working with the state?
We have provided this report to DCEO. DCEO is in a process of creating a statewide strategic plan for economic development, so part of the timing goal was to have some recommendations that were based out of our communities of Urbana-Champaign that were being given to the state because they had some large-format community input sessions that they did singularly, at singular dates across the state. We wanted to make sure that ours was less than just a few voices being heard and a more deliberate conversation about these specific areas that we saw both the university and community opportunity to address. So I do, I do look forward to that coming out. My understanding is that they will put out their recommendations in June and have asked us for the type of research that we're doing to help support those recommendations. that we're doing to help support those recommendations. Certainly, I think the workforce development piece of it would go beyond traditional programs they have, such as the E-Tip program or other funding sources that they're doing through VIA, and looking at, do we have some growth opportunities that we could do that'll be differentiated from other programs in the US if we could foster these skills? Because we're seeing, as I'd said, in the IT space, you know, 35 or more employers with open positions right now, in some cases dozens of open positions in our communities. And if we don't have the skills to fill those positions, those are our very high-wage jobs that we're not going to attract to our community.
Go ahead.
So the, in preparation of this report, many other communities around the nation were looked at. And I wondered if there were things that the communities did, that the municipalities did, that really were helpful, that we should look at and see if there's any way that we can be helpful in those same ways?
So a couple of examples. I'd mentioned San Jose of doing a sustainable or green technologies incubator-type of space. Specifically with that, they wanted a demonstration space where they could have Bay Area for technologies to be built, manufactured, but also used. So they were taking early-stage technologies, as it was described, and putting them to use in city facilities or university facilities in the vicinity. And so that was one of her recommendations, is don't just promote the companies, but figure out a way to use them. There are some unfortunate procurement challenges for us in the university sometimes, that if a faculty member invents something, we can't procure it from them, which seems a little bit counterproductive to encouraging entrepreneurship, but it is the constraint of the procurement laws right now. So it may be possible to work with the cities in that case, that would not have perhaps the same constraints that the university would of using its own technologies that its startups are creating. It was also discussed of mezzanine space. So how do you go beyond, as I'd mentioned, the incubator and come up with other types of environments that are successful? Colab, certainly in Urbana, is an example of companies that are now, in some cases, leaving our incubator, and we just had one graduate and use that space. We had another company just do their big launch party last Friday in Urbana at your butcher shop, that's finally getting product to customers and manufacturing and getting devices out. So I think that there is that challenge, as I had mentioned, of where do we go beyond the incubator? And we recognize the Research Park is not the destination that every one of those companies is going to use. Some will need a different type of collaborative environment, some will need manufacturing space, some will need a cost of accommodation that's maybe different than what the Research Park offers.
If I could ask this one more.
Go ahead.
Are, do, you know, downtown is developing in interesting ways. I mean, lots and lots and lots of both boutique industries, boutique shopping. I mean, I think it's really becoming a very interesting environment. Is there, is it the type of environment that we can develop into a real attraction for the kinds of people that, you know, this report suggests we should want to attract to the community?
On the professional talent, there were two areas discussed in some of these meetings that took place, and I think it's described in the report as well, of appealing to young professionals. So how do we attract those that are in their 20s to stay in Champaign after they graduate from the University of Illinois, or that are working in jobs throughout the community, that are looking for this to be a micro-urban environment? And certainly the downtown thriving arts culture, or the type of environment you see when you can walk into Pizza M Now and you can see just a more hip environment than perhaps existed in the past as being important components. They may seem somewhat superfluous, but they certainly described that the ability to have a rich arts and food sector and entertainment being important to the attraction of young professionals. The second area, though, was that young families being an opportunity. So it's interesting to see how many companies cited that they were able to attract alumni back to the communities, Champaign-Urbana, because of the ability to raise families and have proximity to where they were originally from. And that that is, in some cases, an easier sell, is to be able to recruit talent back that went to the coast, perhaps, for technology positions. But once they get to the point of raising families, decide that this is a community that is a strong fit for them and a lifestyle choice that is more desirable because of affordability of their homes, or access to food like the farmer's market, a farm-to-table, opportunities that wouldn't exist in a large metropolitan area, or other resources we have that are, as I said, both family-friendly but also appealing to a young professional. So there is a group, a group that is not official, looking in Diane's direction, that I don't say this wrong either, that has just loosely organized. And it's been people from the city of Urbana involved, as well as Champaign, as well as people like Matt Cho from Colab, people like Seth Fine that organizes Pygmalion Music Festival, and others that have offered to contribute to a thought of what would be appealing to young professionals, and how do we market ourselves collectively? I think the Research Park, university, and companies seem quite receptive to trying to fund something along those lines. It's not a major new initiative, but it, I think, is well-reflected in what the interviews were suggesting, is that we don't sell ourselves necessarily enough as an opportunity or a destination for professionals, and need some marketing support to do so.
Dennis?
We are happy to be working with the wireless internet, the connectivity of the different nodules of the UC2B program. And it hasn't expanded as fast as we would love it to be expanding. And I'm just wondering if you could evaluate the need to expand and what the current ability would be to create more private-sector-university, maybe, partnerships and assistance to enhance that as another draw for the community? Because I think that many people who come here would want to have fast internet, you know, services like that. And they're available at the university, but they're not as much available in the community itself for people living.
Well, the ability to have fast internet service at the home is another opportunity for entrepreneurship, certainly, as many people begin their companies out of their own homes, and the ability to have fast service can help enable that. Or the connections to their offices, so that they have a lifestyle choice, as I described, for young families that they can take their work home at night, and they're connected seamlessly to their office at gigabit speeds, that that is something that's not available in many communities in the US, but has a strong foundation of already being established because of UC2B in our community. So as that continues to expand more pervasively to more residential settings, I think that that is certainly an opportunity that we could talk about as a selling point for our community. But there are also other discussions that have happened about the pervasiveness of wireless throughout the downtown area. So if somebody's working in a coffee shop, or seamlessly going between the university and some sort of setting where they can work on their private-sector company, that we have some of the best wireless access in the United States. Or cellphone service that's persistent, as that's been complained about by others as well, that the lack of cellphone service in certain pockets of our community, or unreliable cellphone service in some cases, makes it challenging to be programming for mobile devices, as an example. Or doesn't necessarily allow people to work and use mobility as a favorable thing, because they're relying on mobile phones as their business phone, and if they don't have reliable service, that that could impact the way that they conduct their business. But certainly, we are interested in seeing how we can leverage UC2B as an opportunity for growth, and looking at additional internet enhancements or infrastructure enhancements that would support that, such as data centers or other projects like that, that would be necessary to create a robust commuting environment.
And are those things that the municipality could help with, or are these things that have to wait for private-sector advancements?
Well, I think in the case of, say, wireless being pervasively across our community, that that might be something, you know, Urbana's already addressed some of that as well in your downtown area, that the communities could look at as an investment. Or if it's discussions, as I'd said, with cellphone providers, I don't know that we've been particularly effective in doing so through the university. Maybe it's something that the cities help to advocate for as well, so that we have more towers and more seamless connections.
Did you say that the wireless is among the best in the US, or that it should be?
I think there was, from the interviews, discussions that I at least sat in, that was cited as something that was not seamless enough throughout the community, of being able to go from one location to another and still have wireless coverage. So there are a lot of different wireless hotspots throughout the community, but they're not a networked system.
And Lincoln Square was one of the ones that was not very hot.
Okay. Bill, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a few comments. I think the three groupings are good. At first, I thought that we're probably missing, like, material science and more electrical, mechanical engineering, but it works into energy and bioengineering, and they seem to get covered in there. So I think it hits all of the strengths of the U of I. I did, I wanted to make a few comments on collaboration, environment, ecosystem. I think that's one of the things that the city can probably contribute the most to, is just to continue to encourage the type of businesses we have in downtown, like the EcoLab or the Colab, and create collaborative spaces. I remember when Mosaic was starting, I actually had an internship at NCSA the year before they started, so I was able to meet some of those people and see them develop this. And they moved, NCSA actually moved three times during that period, where the most creative spot, where they actually came out with Mosaic, was at the old computer applications building on Springfield and Sixth Street. And the chemistry, American Chemistry Lab, just south of that, had a little round thing we called the fishbowl, connected to it, and that's where the creative energy happened, a little space where probably 20 people could fit. And so people would, they would develop Mosaic during the week, and then once every week, or maybe twice a month, get together in the fishbowl and receive all this creative energy from the other people in the community, including a lot of social sciences, which is also kind of missing from this overview, I think. So actually, I think the creative, I mean, the programmers were very solid programmers, but the creative part that had Mosaic, ex-Mosaic, Mosaic come out on top, really, and come out faster, I think, was what was going on from everybody else that was contributing to that effort. So as far as the social sciences go, and related to that, just to relate my own experiences, because the manager of that group, the software development group, was Joe Harden, and he was actually a sociologist. And he met Larry Smar, because they were both involved in a radical, nuclear-free movement kind of thing. I forget if it was...
Illinois Alliance to Prevent Nuclear War.
Yeah, you know, one of those fringe groups. And so those are the type of things that if we encourage at the city level, you can actually make connections that make a difference in these. And so he recruited this manager that didn't have any technical experience to come, to manage this group of software developers that came out with this earth-shaking, you know, change the world with NCSA Mosaic and the browsers and everything. So I think that things develop in a lot of different directions, and to try to confine them to a research park is a little bit of a mistake. So I think we need to realize that the research park is good for one thing, but we need to collaborate as a community in order to encourage the collaboration and the kind of entrepreneurial developments that need to happen. So I think that, I don't think there was a question in there, actually, but around, I did want to also ask about the missing management link, besides maybe approaching the social scientists a little bit more. I think sometimes around B financiers actually will install the top managers when they come through with their, because they usually take a big stake in the company, don't they? So they can bring top managers in. So when you're talking about our lack of management here, are you talking about, like, the top CEOs and things like that, or the kind of middle managers, or?
Two levels on that, that, yes, the CEOs, and if we are going to have remote CEOs placed by investors in the company, that we have generally seen that once a remote CEO is put in place, that there's a high probability that the company will relocate to be next to them. So making sure we can do a better job of recruitment of the CEOs or, and somehow try to entice them to actually move to our communities, which certainly for, you know, top positions or physicians that are being attracted to our hospitals, there's a major recruitment effort to attract that type of talent for a surgeon. You might say similarly, we need to make sure that for the top CEOs, that we are doing some sort of better welcoming of that, or supporting and recognizing that if we don't attract that talent to our community, there's probably a probability that we'll continue to lose companies that migrate to be where the management is. But aside from the CEOs, it was also discussed of more business-level talent, like VP of Engineering, or a VP of Sales or Business Development, as being also as important and difficult to recruit. Maybe not quite as difficult as the CEO, but some of those management-level positions. The good news is, is that it was also discussed that because the entrepreneurial ecosystem continues to grow, is that we're starting to see more serial entrepreneurs, and that that's a sign of success of other communities, is that you're not always having to recruit in, but that you've got your own success stories that then are perpetuating future success stories, and that that becomes the population base that draws out new successes. I did want to reference also that this environment that you talked about, certainly the coffee shop type of environment, has always been where many entrepreneurs begin, and there are great ones throughout our communities. But there's also this rise, what we're referring to as coworking space, where it becomes less of a distinct walled offices and more of innovators-type of space, seen at Colab or in M2-type of environment, or within the incubator, and we think that those are healthy, good environments to have. Within the College of Engineering, working with the Architecture Department, there were some discussions about creating some sort of impact space for students on campus, or in the campus-town vicinity of some sort. Part of that need was that students who are doing work on projects where they need to build things, don't have any place to build them. So we don't really offer that in the Research Park as a space. If somebody's doing a senior design project, we've had multiple social-impact-driven types of companies that are creating everything from wheelchairs to prosthetic arms, to other entrepreneurs, and creating an environment where they can do so, or simply that thinkers from the campus can get together with innovation space close to where their labs are, but outside of that environment. In terms of the integration of the social sciences, there has been quite a bit of recent discussion about how that would happen with medical opportunities. So as personalized medicine occurs, or population management, or wellness, that there's a role for social sciences to play. And we do have, you know, a strong social, not only a social work school, but we also have a strong applied health sciences group that looks at aging and other aspects that includes social scientists. And on the IT side, what we've been very intrigued by and excited by is the intersection with the arts as well, that the user interface experience is important when it addresses the arts. And we're seeing companies that traditionally have only employed computer scientists now asking routinely for graphic design students or industrial design students to help look at the physical form that, what it is that they're creating will have. So that's something that we think, the maker space, the coworking type of space, and the integration of arts and IT, as well as the social scientists on the healthcare side, to look at the implementation of new healthcare technologies or delivery systems.
Eric?
I think one really cost-effective investment we could make, I mean, maybe it should be in the private sector, but maybe we should just do it, because it's not going to cost a tremendous amount of money, is just make sure that we have ubiquitous wireless downtown, and start with piattos. It's just crazy that there's no wireless in that space. I mean, I always go, you know, I like to work, I like to work on my computer in a public space with coffee and wireless. And I try to do this in Urbana. I love flying machine. Sometimes, that's now getting so popular that sometimes it's really full. It's crazy that I, I and other people who like this environment, either for working by themselves or working together, can't do it in piattos.
Okay. We'll work on that. Anyone else? Well, that was a pretty thorough discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, council, for having me.
Actually, instead of crazy, I should have used, so Larry Smar had this wonderful phrase that he always used to use. He would never say it was crazy, he would say it was brain-dead. And it was a better expression, actually.
Okay, thank you very much, Laura. Okay, our next topic is the Pilot-Curbanas program, temporary sidewalk extensions on Main Street. Yes, Tom?
I'm sorry, I'd like to introduce Kate Ferrer. She is our Economic Development Specialist, and she is the project manager for this project, which has many names, but we are using the term Curbana.
Okay. We didn't have a report on that.
No, Kate is doing a presentation to introduce the idea to council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to update council on the research that we've done to date on the potential implementation of a pilot program for downtown. As Tom mentioned, they would be called Curbanas, and I'll sort of dive into the what of Curbanas in a minute. I'm going to start with just some background information on what prompted us to... I'm going to start with just some background information on what prompted us to start this process. One of the goals of our downtown plan is to have more public spaces for people to linger in, to enjoy downtown Urbana. And one of the problems that we face is that especially along Main Street, there is not a lot of public space available for people to linger, to eat or drink outside, or to have public performances. And part of that is because our sidewalks are very narrow in the downtown, which doesn't really allow for people to have outdoor seating along Main Street. So some of these goals here that are mentioned in the downtown plan are very ambitious, but we feel perhaps not as feasible at this time. They're very large steps, such as forming a public plaza at the juncture of where Main and Springfield split off. So curbanas was sort of a reaction to these larger ideas, an initial step towards having more public space in the downtown for people to enjoy downtown Urbana and perhaps to inspire more collaborative efforts among businesses to have outdoor events and outdoor seating for patrons. We also are responding to some requests by businesses who are unable to have sidewalk cafes in front of their businesses, because in order to be ADA compliant, we have to allow a four-foot travel lane on all of our downtown sidewalks. And so we aren't really able to provide them seating in front of their business if they can't also provide a travel lane. So to get into what curbanas actually are, in other communities, curbanas have been called parklets or curb cafes. And we can thank Mike Bronk from Public Works for coining the term curbanas for us. It's a little more unique, but I think it describes us better. Curbanas are temporary extensions of the sidewalk that extend into parallel parking spaces. As you can see here in this picture, this is a wooden platform that extends about six feet out from the sidewalk and is flush with the curb here. And this would fit into a parallel parking space, so it would be about six feet wide. And if it took up two parking spaces, would be approximately 40 feet long, or if a single parking space would be 20 feet long, et cetera. And these are spaces where people can come, and you can see here, there are tables and chairs for people to sit outside, enjoy street life, and generally linger on Main Street more than they're able to right now. So here's another imagery. You can see that the curbana slides into these, these parallel parking spaces and has a barrier along this side which segregates it from the road in order to make it obvious that it's a pedestrian space and not for vehicle use. One of the benefits of temporary extensions of the sidewalk is that they're much less expensive than the permanent build-out of the sidewalk. Obviously, permanent construction or a bump out in, in a similarly sized space would cost more money and is not reversible, so there is no opportunity to return it to parking at a future time, or temporarily, as you would in our case. So since we are in the Midwest and it does snow, these spaces would be returned to parking in the winter months. So curbanas are not just something I made up. They actually exist in a lot of other communities and other names, as I mentioned. More often, they're called parklets or curb cafes. These two pictures were taken last summer in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, which recently installed four curb cafes in their downtown area. As you can see, they support several chairs, and in later images, I'll show you some alternative uses for them. But these are taking off in a number of communities. A lot of them are major metro areas, but increasingly, we're also seeing them in smaller communities around our size. So here are some major areas that have started their own pilot programs. San Francisco probably has the largest program. It's installed more than 30 parklets throughout the city with great success. This is a few more cities, and as you can see, Cedar Rapids, Iowa is a little closer to home and provides the best model of what this would look like in another Midwestern city. And last summer, Kansas City, Missouri also installed two parklets in its downtown, and those were also a success. So we're starting to see these programs taking off in the Midwest, and they represent a good opportunity to expand our outdoor seating options at less cost and less risk than permanent expansion of the sidewalk. As you can see in these pictures, during the summer months, when people can bike downtown, it provides an opportunity for people to sit outside and enjoy the street life. In Cedar Rapids, they also set up a piano so that people could play music outdoors. And this also provides an opportunity, we don't have right now, for things like downtown busking. Unfortunately, it's very difficult to busk in our downtown if it obstructs the sidewalk for other people to walk. So this might provide more opportunity for businesses to work with musicians or other artists to provide that, that type of vibrancy and street life that is difficult to do now without the adequate sidewalk space. When we looked for places to pilot this program, we considered safety and also whether or not the business would be able to make full use of these immediately. So the two sites that we elected to pilot this at are restaurant businesses that have large, they have already used most of their indoor seating capacity and are able to absorb additional outdoor capacity. Both of these locations are on Main Street, so the speed limit is relatively low in a largely pedestrian area, or, or I should say, in an area we are trying to make increasingly pedestrian-friendly. With the recent summer construction, we now have dedicated bike lanes on both sides of the road, which would provide an additional buffer between the curbanas and traffic. And both of these locations are within one block of city parking lots, so that also means that people will not have to necessarily walk much farther to get to their destination. This map shows the two locations where we would like to pilot this program. The first is at Crane Alley, and the second is at Cafeteria and Company, which I know someone mentioned earlier, often is very full inside now, and the same can be said of Crane Alley. So we think these businesses would be capable of absorbing additional outdoor seating in the summer. This is a mock-up of what it would look like to expand a curbana into two parking spaces, two parking spaces in front of Crane Alley. As you can, as you can see on the previous map, Crane Alley is actually immediately adjacent to the downtown parking deck. So patrons would only need to continue driving and turn right to reach additional street parking. And of course, there's more parking along Main on both sides of the road. One of the benefits of Crane Alley is that the parking bay is sort of nestled between two existing bumpouts and planters on both sides. This is the public art in downtown off to the side here, which makes it an ideal location. It's sort of already nestled in and would easily convert to a curbana with no additional space on either side of it. In front of Cafeteria and Company, we have three parking spaces right now, and we are proposing the use of only two. This is Siam Terrace. This would be two parking spaces converted to a curbana with one remaining parking space in front of Colab and Corson's. Again, it's only about a half-block to Lot 11, which is additional city parking, and of course, parking along Main Street. The remaining parking space is a benefit because of the shape of the bump out would allow cars to come in and out of this parking space. And we feel that it would be beneficial to have that parking space there for businesses like Corson's and Pizza M, which have frequent deliveries or people who need the space for only a short time. We are having some open house events to inform businesses about this proposed program for downtown. These two events would be geared towards businesses in the immediate vicinity of the curbanas pilot program. So about 70 business owners and property owners along Main Street, North and South Race Street, and North and South Broadway would be notified and welcome to attend these events so that they can provide input on this program. The proposed pilot program would run from this April through about early October, depending on the weather, and staff would report back to council in the fall with the details of the program and any obstacles we faced. We are proposing that the program would largely follow the same pattern as the current Sidewalk Cafe program, which has been very successful, the same fee structure, with an additional $250 annual fee on top of the existing fee structure, which would go towards administrative and installation costs, because of course, the curbanas would have to be installed and removed seasonally. And we believe businesses should bear some of that cost. Additionally, the businesses, the same as the Sidewalk Cafe program, would insure the structures and indemnify the city against, the same as the Sidewalk Cafe program. So we anticipate it would be similarly administered and successful if it were, if it were done the same way. We are currently evaluating the cost of purchasing prefabricated system versus in-house construction. There are companies that specialize in the decking systems used to make parklets. However, we believe it may be done at less cost to do it in-house. To give a rough estimate, at this time, I can't be more specific, unfortunately, but about $10,000 per parking space to purchase a prefabricated parklet system. By comparison, in 2006, the Siam Terrace and Office bump out, permanent, permanent expansion of the sidewalk was about $20,000 per parking space. So even a prefabricated parklet system is less expensive by about half than permanent expansion of the sidewalk. And we are still evaluating whether it would be less still to do an in-house construction of curbana systems. This is just a general program timeline of what we would like to do moving forward. This month would be the noticing and the open houses to invite comments from businesses in the area. We would require a budget amendment and fee schedule approval before moving forward with construction or going out to bid for a system to install. We would like to have installation in April so that businesses could take full advantage of the six-month period where the weather is acceptable for outdoor seating. And then, of course, before the weather turns, we would need to remove the systems and store them for winter. At that time, we would evaluate the program, its successes and weaknesses, and report those back to council for further review for moving forward with the pilot program. So that is it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to ask a question. Has this been considered for the Market at the Square? Is it an option?
I think these two programs are being evaluated separately because of their different needs.
I know, but you're talking about a permanent one for Market at the Square, and then these are temporary, so, and the cost, you said, was lower, so just asking a question.
Yeah, well, I guess the difference would be that these are decking systems, and while I don't, the short answer is no, they're not being considered for the Market at the Square, but I think that the market is considering other options.
Dennis.
Yeah, I worked a lot to help try to formulate the downtown plan update a couple of years ago, and I did also bring the idea of, you know, examples of other communities that had these curbanas, as they, you're calling them. And so it's nice to see that we're actually trying to activate some of the proposals that are enhanced in the downtown plan. My experience has been that we often have a lot of ideas. We never actually enact them, so this is really kind of exciting that this is going to happen. There's been a lot of concern about adequate parking on Main Street by several different businesses in the past. And even though this may be a project that is engaging a particular business who's proactively interested in it for a lot of reasons, because of their clientele, I could foresee that there'd be an interesting discussion perhaps during the open, the open meetings that you're proposing. Are the, are these curbanas intended to be business-specific, or are they for the, for the, any businesses that are on that side of the street? In other words, what's the, you know, if Business A puts one in, and Business B has people come out with bags of food and they want to sit there too, is there going to be any kind of jurisdictional, you know, concern about, you know, what kind of patrons are sitting and using this public space?
Well, I think the reason we are trying to model this after the Sidewalk Cafe program is because it's a very similar use. Under the Sidewalk Cafe program, we ask businesses to insure the space under their own business and to indemnify the city against any loss or damages. So similarly, if this is an extension of their private business space and they are insuring it under their own business license, then yes, it would be specific to each business. That said, I think there is a lot of opportunity for businesses to collaborate intentionally to get more out of their curbanas. And the reason we chose these spaces is because we are hopeful that they will take advantage of their proximity to each other. For instance, even though the curbana would be in front of Cafeteria, or, excuse me, yes, Cafeteria and Company, there's no reason that they can't collaborate with musicians or artists or nearby businesses to bring more to that area. So we are asking businesses to privately insure the space for their personal business use. However, I think we've chosen such that businesses will make the decision to bring more life to those areas and not simply use them exclusively for their business.
So, then just to follow up. So is, is their responsibility just the insurance indemnity, or it's also the construction cost, correct? And there's, and there's a fee as well to create these things?
There is a fee. So right now, the city would, we believe it is in our best interest to maintain control of the design and installation process, which means that we would bear the cost of actually purchasing materials and constructing them, keeping in mind at this point that it's a pilot program, but we would like to keep that control to ourselves at this time to make sure that they are aesthetically pleasing and make a good impression on, on the downtown, that they are a success. But businesses would be responsible for things like the furniture that goes into them, maintaining them, obviously, making sure they're free of debris, things like that. So we are asking businesses to make an investment to make sure that they are usable spaces, but we would bear the cost of actually constructing them.
And, and if, if, if a group of businesses in a row wanted to all participate, are you considering adding an additional parking spot and allowing less parking on Main Street to enhance the summertime use of the curbanas?
Well, again, this is a pilot program, so conservatively, we're beginning with two so that we can monitor the program and see what types of commentary and feedback we get from the downtown area. If it were popular, if we got more responses that businesses wanted additional space in the downtown, we would need to evaluate that in a following cycle.
And you picked these spots because you've had interactions with the property owners, the businesses?
Yes, we received feedback that businesses want more downtown space outdoors, but that they are unable to do so because of the constrictions of the sidewalk.
Anyone else? Mike.
Just a quick question. Crane Alley, obviously is named after Crane Alley, which is full of tables. Also Crane Alley, every time Charlie lures me down for a beer after city council meetings, I walk by three or four tables out front. So I guess I'm confused as to why, are they in violation of ADA by having those tables out front now?
No, they're not. Crane Alley does maintain a four-foot travel lane in front of their business. We chose Crane Alley because they can accommodate additional outdoor seating. I'm sure if you've been past there on the weekends, usually the alley is quite full and people spill out into the front.
So they would maybe have two layers of tables against the building and then out in the curbana, and then there would be a sidewalk in between?
There always needs to be a four-foot travel lane, so there would be the tables against the building, a four-foot travel lane, and then additional tables in the curbana, and that would be insured as a continuous space.
Okay, well, and I, I do, I think Dennis asked some really good questions about the businesses that would not be, would not be, or would maybe be forced to collaborate, or, I mean, I understand we want to foster this environment of collaboration, but, you know, if the person paying the permit doesn't want to play, well, then the music shop or others may be cut out. And while I understand that the intentions here are good, I think in government, we have to be very careful about picking winners and losers. And in the name of economic development in a more vibrant downtown, we don't want to hobble a business that's next door. So hopefully, that's all going to be taken into consideration in the pilot here.
Yes, we've already made some outreach to nearby businesses to gauge their reaction and get their opinion and try to take those initial steps towards making sure their needs are met as well.
Okay, and my final question is, how many spaces are in that, in that two-block? How many parking spaces are there currently?
Are you count, as in along the entire length of both sides of the street?
Yes.
We haven't done an official count. What we have done is measure how often the spaces are used. So for instance, in front of Crane Alley, the spaces are used about 50% of the time. In front of Colab, we have some numbers that I hesitate to report because until Macho purchased the building, that street was largely underutilized. But those are used for the last fiscal year about 30% of the time. So based on previous records, we do know that those spaces are not completely occupied all the time, and of course, we also know that they're very close to the downtown parking deck, which provides much additional parking.
But we have, and largely because of the efforts of the city over the last few years, or not the last few years, the last, well, the last few years, but particularly the last several months, we've had a real acceleration in occupancy downtown. So, you know, I mean, I, I think the timing of this is all a little bit concerning to me. me. I mean, on one hand, we're inviting all these businesses downtown, we're paying them grand opening grants and helping subsidize them in other ways, I assume, and then we're going to say, "But, we're going to have a few less parking spaces for you now." So I mean, I, you know, I mean, that's a concern to me.
And that's true, and at the same time, we're also seeing a real uptick in the number of people requesting additional bike parking. So along with installing "curbanas," we're also looking at installing additional bike parking throughout downtown. So I think a lot of the new businesses we're getting, much of the clients they serve are actually people who prefer to walk or bike. Of course, we don't have any exact numbers on that, but we have gotten feedback from businesses that they need additional bike parking. So I think that with these new businesses, yes, there is an increase in people who would like parking, but to some extent, it's bikers and pedestrians.
I think Carol was next.
Two questions. I'll try to attend one of the sessions, because I'd like to hear from the other businesses. But, if the city pays to build them, how do you keep, because I usually have trouble finding parking downtown? And then secondly, how do they, how do they plan to proceed to prevent other people from simply sitting there in those "curbanas"? Because all the taxpayers ultimately will pay for this. And so, and there's no funding source connected to this as well, so I'm interested in that. I'm also interested, and you don't have to answer it all today, I guess you're going to have all these public forums, so people probably want to know that. I'm also interested in storage of this, of these things later, because I'm understanding that Public Works is out of space, our city is out of space, and we're just out of space. Where are they going to go at the end of the season?
I would have to defer to Public Works on the storage question. To your other questions, I believe we're planning to finance these out of the TIF district. And to the question of whether or not they are public space, one could make the argument that you can always sit in Crane Alley, whether or not the business is there. I know they have the sign, but it is technically a public alley, in the same way that you can sit in front of any business, really. So while we are funding them, yes, they are open to taxpayers, but the business is insuring them.
Diane?
Are these being designed so that they could be moved to a different location if these particular ones didn't work out, or are they custom for those particular spaces?
They will be built to standard dimensions of parking spaces, probably in two-foot increments, so I would imagine that if for whatever reason we needed to move them, they would be able to fit into another parking space, and most of the parking spaces downtown are approximately six feet wide and 22 feet long. We've been conservative with the measurements, so that although there are spaces that are slightly larger, about seven feet wide, we are erring on the side of six feet so that they would be able to fit into other parking spaces if we needed to move them around.
So we could spread the opportunity around if necessary.
And that's a possibility. Again, it's a pilot program, so, you know, we're looking at the effects in these two locations and then analyzing and going from there.
Carol?
I just wanted to follow up, not necessarily to you. I appreciate your, I like the "curbanas." I like them when I go to other cities, I think they're beautiful. My question though, for probably finance or the mayor, is how we describe utilizing TIF funds for this type of project, according to the definition of TIF funds, we seem to be making it fit for everything, and I'm concerned about that. I was concerned about it on the first request, but I thought the seating in Lincoln Square, the partnership was a good idea, and I think this is a good idea generally. But so many other things that we have need for that would, in my opinion, address blight, which is supposed to be what TIF are for, I think are being used for other reasons. And I'd like for us to have an actual study session on the TIF, what they should be used for, and how we could apply those things to really address other blighted areas as well. I don't think this is a blight issue to address for private businesses in this manner. I don't think that's the funding source for this.
A TIF is a specific geographic area, and the money that we invest is, you know, in a fixed time period, and it is for economic development. So that's the rationale. So you couldn't use it, well, you couldn't use it in a different part of the city unless it was a TIF that's connected to it. Do you want to expand on that? Tom?
Sure. Well, infrastructure improvements, fixtures, streetscape improvements are eligible TIF expenses. So, but theoretically, if we were to fund the "curbanas," they should stay within the TIF, so we probably should not purchase these, install them where we're talking, which is TIF-eligible, but then maybe take those away and install them somewhere outside the TIF later on down the road. So these should probably continue to be used within the TIF to make sure that they remain TIF-eligible. But yes, they are, in a very basic sense, they are eligible TIF expenses.
Eric?
So my understanding of the philosophy and the expressed purpose of the TIF, and then comes from the name, tax increment financing, that these are supposed to be investments that over time will pay for themselves by increased tax revenue, either property tax or sales tax, or whatever. And so I think that it doesn't necessarily have to be blight, it just has to be something that's going to improve the tax base wherever it's done.
It started out as a blight problem or a lack of development, and the downtown is different now because of all the TIF investments, but that doesn't mean we're going to stop investing, we're just going to keep going, and we're raising the value. Anyone else? Dennis?
So, we're talking about the downtown, and I guess I'm willing to do this trial year to see how that works out, because I think the idea is a good, solid one for economic activity in the downtown area. And so I'm thinking, if it's successful, or I think there could be opportunities in areas where there is not a specific business located, but I mean, I would hope that we would consider offering "curvana" space, say, in the completed boneyard area. Which is not adjacent necessarily to a specific business, but it is certainly a business opportunity to have, you know, outdoor seating and restaurant services perhaps, you know, in areas where the boneyard is being enhanced.
Bill?
I might have missed, did you say how long the estimated service life is on these?
On the prefabricated ones, it is about eight years. And then obviously, if we were to build them in-house, it would depend on the choice of materials. I assume we would go for something that has aesthetic value while also being durable and able to weather the takedown and reinstallation every year.
Okay, I guess $40,000, so we're talking about $40,000 for four spaces if we buy the prefabricated?
If we buy the prefabricated, which...
For that, for eight years, seems like, might not be a good deal. So I hope we can make it ourselves, because that seems like a lot of money that would just not go into permanent infrastructure, but just be good for that amount of years and then be gone.
And we're still investigating which system would be ideal for downtown.
And we do have some discussion about training programs for young people in things like carpentry, so we might be able to do both on these projects. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe we have completed all the business, so let's have this meeting be adjourned. Thank you very much.